Okay, well, welcome to everyone to our Tuesday, May 26th, 2020 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening, virtually. I'm going to go turn it over to the clerk, who will read a notice and then our call to order. Our call to order, yes. Madam Clerk?
Yes. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. Public hearings tonight will be held electronically at this location. Public comments will be accepted electronically at the email address cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. We will repeat that throughout the meeting when we get to the public hearings, and they will be taken until the end of any public hearings that we are having. Call, uh, public hearing comments were also accepted until close of business today at the city clerk's phone number. All participating members of City Council are present at this meeting through electronic means, and members of the public are welcome to view the meeting here at www.fallschurchva.gov/councilmeetings, or on Falls Church Cable TV stations Cox 11, RCN 2, or Verizon 35. And I can do the roll call if you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that would be great. I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order, if I could. And again, welcome to all for joining us virtually at the Tuesday, May 26th, 2020 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. I'm going to go ahead and ask everyone, although you're in your own homes, to still nonetheless rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and maybe you can all join me wherever you might be with the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's go ahead and do that if we can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I am back.
And Mayor, Mayor, this is Cindy. Sorry for interruption. I would just like to let you counsel on the city clerk. Now I'm having some internet connection problems. I'm having trouble bringing up the documents, but the meeting can certainly continue, and I'll hope to present as soon as possible.
All right. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, will you now call, roll?
Yes, Vice Mayor Conley, here. Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Mr. Z is absent. He's got a severe case of laryngitis.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor Charter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
All right. Thank you very much. We've got a busy agenda tonight with our budget and some other important matters, but before we get started, we have an equally important matter, which is to issue, earlier today, we issued a proclamation in recognition of our longtime citizen volunteer Barb Cram, declaring Thursday, May 28th, as Barb Cram Appreciation Day. And because Barb means so much to all of us, and so she can hear our voices, I'd like each of my council colleagues to each read a paragraph of the proclamation, and we'll do that in alphabetical order. And then afterwards, I imagine a few of my colleagues may have a few additional words to say. So this is for you, Barb. I'm going to start with Vice Mayor Conley.
Whereas Barbara Cram moved to Falls Church in 1978, and into the city in 1986, bringing her generosity, resourcefulness, and high energy to preserve and promote the character of the city, and to make it the hometown we all love, and?
Hi, Barb. God bless. Whereas she brought her business, Greenscape, to the city, and demonstrated that creativity and quality mattered in all things, and was a stalwart for the business community, serving on the public-private partnership, the city's tricentennial committee, and working tirelessly for the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce, winning the Pillar of the Community Award, and?
Whereas she acted on her love of preservation and promoting the historic character of the city by advocating for Civil War trails, and actively supporting the Village Preservation and Improvement Society, winning the Spirit of Falls Church Award, the highest honor and recognition of the society, and?
Whereas she actively promoted the Falls Church sense of place by creating and caring for downtown flower baskets and banners, and being a generous promoter of our parks and gardens, and served as chair and organizing force of the Watch Night Falls Church Celebration for nearly a decade, creating a tradition of festive vitality to ring in each new year, and?
Whereas Barb was the organizing founder of the Little City Cats Foundation, and she was a leader in creating and chairing the city's Arts and Humanities Council, as a strong advocate for outstanding public art, and?
Whereas she was active in the development of art space, and as president of Falls Church Arts for the last 10 years. She has led its impressive growth, so the gallery is now regionally recognized and a very highly regarded asset for the community. Whereas, as an enthusiastic community volunteer, Barb's legacy of service is an inspiration to all who know her, and her mastery of bringing people together to accomplish remarkable things is recognized by the community, and has engendered the love and appreciation of so many people in Falls Church. Now therefore, I, David Carter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 28th, 2020, as Barb Cram Appreciation Day, and urge all citizens to observe the day and recognize Barb Cram as a model citizen, serving her family, church, and community in an extraordinary way. Thank you, Barb. Now, do folks have some additional comments they might want to make?
I do.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yep, I'll go first. Barb, this goes out to you. You're an amazing woman. Watch Night is one of those spectacular events that I really feel encompasses what Falls Church is all about. And when I look around the community and I think of strong women in Falls Church, I've got three young daughters, I can't think of a better role model. And thank you for everything that you've done for our community. This is a well-deserved proclamation for you, about you, and look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lichtenhouse. Are there other folks who'd like to make a comment or two? Mr. Snyder, did you have something you were going to say?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to defer to others. So Barb is one of those people that everything she touches just gets better, and a lot of the things that we now take for granted, events, places, organizations, that we take for granted in the City of Falls Church with the resolve of her hard work. So Barb, we still need you. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Duncan?
Just briefly, Barb, hi. Talked this weekend with my daughter Meredith out at San Francisco Bay. She sends her best, and all of us Dunkins want to thank you for all you've done to help encourage our kids, both Tyler and Meredith, particularly Meredith and her artistic interests. It was very good of you, when she graduated from college, to give her senior art show the opportunity to shine in the Falls Church Arts environment. We remember that. We appreciate that, and we send you all our love.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duncan. Other folks? Does anyone else have any comments?
Mayor, I do.
Yes, Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Hi, Barb. Volunteer extraordinaire. We just wanted to let you know that we are all thinking of you and sending our love. Can't wait to see the next project you work on.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Anyone else have any comments?
I'll add something too, Mayor. Barb, I just want to thank you. I'll try that again. Barb, I just want to thank you for being such a role model for volunteerism and community spirit, and for encouraging so many young people to get involved in the community. Your enthusiasm is contagious, and there are so many people who are part of this community that you've pulled in and welcomed, and our community will never be the same because of your influence.
All right. Thank you. I think that's nearly everyone. I'll just add a few, few words of my own. Barb, but the one thing I really appreciated about, that I do appreciate about you is the fact you're a doer. A lot of folks in government and politics like to talk, often not so much do. You are the antithesis of that. You are a doer. You've got things done, and there's so many things here in Falls Church that I think the whole community owes you a debt of gratitude for bringing together and bringing people together. So thank you so much for all that you've done and will do. We greatly appreciate it. All right. Is there any, I think we've covered the ground on that. I don't think there's anyone else left to say much, at least not on council. Should we move on then to the summary of written comments, Madam Clerk?
Certainly. We have two budget comments tonight. Rod Kiefer of 205 North Oak Street asked about a possible deferral or decrease in the real estate tax bills in light of the pandemic. And the Environmental Sustainability Council asked that the planned October 2020 recycling extravaganza and household hazardous waste event be funded in the FY21 budget. We had a number of COVID-19-related comments. WZ Roth updated council on problems residents are having in receiving unemployment and other benefits. Richard and Marika Sign of 305 West Columbia Street requested that tennis courts be reopened, as did Lee Johnson and Anna, nope, just Lee Johnson. Anna Weisfield of 1112 Jackson Court requested more open streets programs during the pandemic, as did Mary Ellen Miller of 702 Randolph Street. Hannah Jordan asked for more speeding enforcement during the pandemic, as did Jacqueline L. Robertson.
All right. Is that it?
I think that's it.
All right. Is there any public comment that's been received during the penancy of this meeting?
Not at this point. I actually might have had a few more comments. If you can come back to me during the public hearing portions, we can finish up that. My, my computer decided to stall for a minute.
All right. Well, I'll tell you, when you're ready, you let us know. And if we could just once more, give that email address out to the public in case they want to comment on tonight's budget in particular. Could we do that one more time?
Yes. It's cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov, and that's actually working on my other computer, and I can see it. So if you send me something, I'll see it right away.
All right. Thank you very much. So we've received written comments and public comment. Are there any council requests at this point?
Mr. Mayor, just one, not for, not for right now, but before we bang the gavel closed tonight, could I ask that we discuss the agenda of the proposed Economic Development Committee meeting on Thursday with the group, because it's just sort of cumbersome to try to talk about the agenda with three of the seven council members on the group. We can't do it without violating the open meetings law. So I could just ask if we do that before the meeting ends. Thank you.
All right. All right. That sounds good. So unless there are any other council requests, let's move on to the report of the city manager.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hi, Dave Snyder. Thanks very much. So I wanted to recount an experience of getting tested for COVID-19 over the weekend. We decided that since everyone was urged to get tested, that we would do that. What we found was very interesting, and very incomplete infrastructure to do the testing. The hospitals were closed over the holidays. So we stood in line for two and a half hours at Annandale High School, were tested, thoroughly impressed with the people there. No effort to push in line, very patient, appreciate the work of healthcare providers. But I think it shows that if testing is significant, and we know it is, that the infrastructure is not now there to sufficiently serve the public. So my question will be later on to the city manager. Can we use CARES funding to up testing for our citizens, so that they don't have to wait in line for two and a half hours or so in order to get tested? So in any event, I wanted to disclose that. Here's a, here's our number at Annandale High School, and I wanted to test firsthand whether the infrastructure was sufficient, since people were urged to get tests, and clearly it's not. So I'm hopeful that as we address COVID-19 issues, that we'll work for ways to encourage the state and the private sector to do a lot more than has occurred so far, and even the potential use of the city's CARES Act funding. So that will be a question I'll ask city manager, but I wanted to illustrate the inadequacy of the testing infrastructure through a personal experience. Thank you very much.
I second that, Mr. Snyder. Here, here.
Excuse me?
I said I second that. I agree with you. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other council requests? We look for, we look forward to hearing more from, about that later, Mr. Snyder, but thank you for that update. It's quite informative. Are there any other council requests, or should we move to the report of the city manager?
Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, my, the rest of my comments came up on the screen, so would you let me to finish those?
Of course.
The comments received. Thank you. We stopped with Jacqueline Robertson. She was asking for more speeding enforcement during the pandemic. We received something from Niels Pemberton, who wrote to protest the suspension of service on the Silver Line for repairs. In other comments, the Byer family provided comments on the West End Small Area Plan. Veepus sent a letter in support of the proposed Route 29 improvements project. Paul Rusty Thomas of 408 Lincoln Avenue provided comments on police presence on the WNOG trail, crime notifications, and a recent traffic ticket. Veepus thanks the council and staff for preserving the tree buffer in Big Chimneys Park during utility work, and Ann Sherwood wrote to thank council for supporting a delay in transitioning to Phase 1 of reopening. And those were our written comments.
All right. We thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And please, as the meeting goes on, if you receive additional public comments, let us know when appropriate, so that we can be aware of what our constituents are thinking and would like to know. Unless there's any other council requests or council comments, why don't we move to the report of the city manager? Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Carter, members of council. I have a long list of things that I'd like to touch on briefly in the manager's report tonight. But if I could first just say a quick word about our celebration of Barb Cram Appreciation Day on behalf of city staff. I just want to say that for probably the majority of city employees, we have all been enlisted, Barb, in your projects, and we can't wait to be enlisted in future projects. And the way that you do it is always with that special Barb Cram touch, where, one, you're going to come in with a ton of energy and great ideas, and you're going to ask for some very specific things that staff can do to help you. You never take a problem and push it off to someone else. You always have an idea. As the mayor said, you're a doer, and it's always been a great joy for city staff to, to work with you on your projects. At new employee orientation, I usually confess right up front, I work for Barb Cram. And so we'll certainly be celebrating Barb Cram Appreciation Day. Before I go into the next items on the manager's report, we have two guests, Becky Witzman, our Business Services Manager for the Economic Development Office, and Bob Young, our Chairman of the EDA. And the EDA, as the council knows, and as the community knows, had a business, a COVID Emergency Business Assistance Grant Program. And we want to give council a briefing on the results of that program, and answer any questions that you have. Chairman Young, should I turn it to you, or Ms. Witzman? Would you like to speak to it?
Can you hear me? I'll take it.
Very good. Thank, thank you, Chairman.
We can hear you. Welcome.
I'm going to be very brief. As you all know, the grant program was advertised extensively in the Falls Church news press, on the city and EDA websites, and the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce worked very hard getting the word out via social media and their email list. We had a total of 106 applicants. A total of 84 were qualified, 22 ineligible for a wide variety of reasons. Interestingly enough, several who didn't live in the city, or didn't work in the city, rather, their businesses were in Vienna or elsewhere. So 84 were approved. As you'll recall, we initially started with 50. The EDA provided for a subcommittee of Becky Witzman, myself, and Eric Pelton. We agreed unanimously that since we had 34 additional applicants who were qualified, we would go ahead and push those grants out. So there were a total of 84 awards made. Amazingly enough, the checks were available by Friday night. They were given to Tom Clinton's office. Tom decided on his own that he didn't want to have those checks languish over the long weekend, so he took those who had asked them to be mailed down to the Merrifield Post Office, and personally delivered all of the rest of them, by hand, over the holiday. So our thanks to Tom. I believe it's the case that we're the first jurisdiction in Northern Virginia to actually get grants in the hands of our small businesses. I can't say enough about Becky Witzman and the incredible number of hours that she and her staff put in. It was just amazing. This took some weeks, as you know, and hundreds and hundreds of emails, phone calls, et cetera. It's my intention to, at our meeting, at the EDA meeting a week from today, Tuesday, 9th, June 2nd, I'm going to ask the EDA to consider pushing out the balance of the $250,000 that was initially approved, and in doing so, to widen the eligibility, perhaps to a gross of $750,000, perhaps widening to include nonprofits. And there are several other candidates that we'll discuss Tuesday night. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you for your leadership, and for Eric's leadership in the whole EDA, and Becky. You guys have just come together and have been so nimble and quick, and, and really, what we, as a small city, like to think we can do, and that we can do. So we really appreciate the work you all have done. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to questions. Do people have questions or comments for Bob or Becky?
I got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yep. Bob, Becky, Eric, others that have been involved in this, thank you very much for your efforts here. Have you all had any other kind of substantive follow-up conversations with those businesses about what else we could be doing to help them, as well as, you know, possible next steps, maybe not from a funding perspective, but from action items, from a, from an elected body perspective, at least?
You'll see on, this is Bob Young, you'll see on the, what's up on the screen, that there's a list of suggestions for the city. Things like additional funding, provide clear safety guidelines for employees and customers for reopening the businesses.
Great.
Obtaining cleaning supplies, aforementioned tax abatements, and so on. You can see the list there. I won't just read it. Those are the kinds of things that we're hearing. I've heard personally from a number of businesses that weren't eligible. There are quite a significant number who, if given another opportunity, will be able to fix whatever their problem was. Confident we would get quite a few new applicants, or re-applications that would be qualified, if we're able to move forward.
Okay. Do we have, and I guess just maybe this is anecdotally or otherwise, but do we have a feeling as to, you know, how much that, that amount of money meant to those individuals? Do we feel like, just based on your, your conversations with them, or the feedback that you've been getting, do we feel like, you know, that's going to help them bridge a significant gap, as giving the indication of kind of the health of the small business community in Falls Church?
Becky, can you respond to that? Because I know you've seen a lot more of the feedback we've gotten online.
I have. We received an awful lot of emails. We sent out email notifications of the awards, and we had, I think, well over half of the folks who received those emails write us back and tell us how much they appreciated the money, and that they used it to do things like pay a utility bill, or pay their rent, or, you know, many of them mentioned the reasons that they spent the money, and, like I say, how appreciative they were of the money. We even had a couple of people who were kind of surprised they actually got a check. I, you know, like, I didn't really think I'd win, or I would be awarded the money. So, and Tom Clinton reported that the people he delivered to just were tickled to death. I've had phone calls with people who couldn't have been happier or more appreciative.
Okay. All right. And I was also, just last question for you guys, also curious to know if you've gotten any feedback from them about kind of state-level response. I see some suggestions here, some things that we could address, some things that we couldn't. But is there, was there any indication from those businesses that you talked to about how they felt about not opening up yet, or the expediency of opening things back up in Virginia as a whole?
I haven't had any of those discussions. Becky, I don't know if you have or not.
Well, Sally and I both have been kind of surprised that we really haven't had a lot of people who were agitating to get open. I think there's some nervousness out there, and, you know, hope for some direction, and kind of waiting to see how things go, and to take it slowly and carefully.
Okay. Maybe this isn't appropriate time to ask this question. Maybe it's later on. But the, the group that we've been putting together, I know that has been kind of focused on the reopening, and the transition to reopening of businesses in Falls Church. Do we have business leaders from the community, some of these small business owners that may, may or may not have been recipients of this grant, that are a part of that, that would help us transition into the reopening?
Councilmember Lichtenhouse, this is why, and I'll jump in with that question. We need to increase our engagement with the business community on that, and I'll, I'll just tell you, so far, it's been such a changing environment in terms of what the guidance is from the health authorities, from the governor, and just sort of figuring out what the rules are, that we've spent a lot of time just trying to get sort of the basics figured out, so that we can begin to get guidance out to the business community. We've ramped that up in the, really starting last Friday, and the, the focus of our initial communications are for the restaurant community, because we do recognize that the restaurants in Phase 1 will have the opportunity to offer outdoor dining, and expanded outdoor dining in Phase 1. And we know there's just a lot of questions about that, how that will work. And so we wanted to get guidance out on that as quickly as possible. For probably the next group of businesses that have the most questions, I think, on how to do things safely, will be the hair salons, barber shops, those types of personal services, which also will open in Phase 1. And I should just note, the governor made very clear today that Phase 1 will be this Friday, May 29th, for Northern Virginia. So everyone should plan accordingly. And so this next, you know, so that, you know, after the restaurants, the hair salons and barber shops, there are, you know, specific rules on how hair salons and barber shops are to operate in Phase 1. And so we're trying to get that information out. And then all other businesses, there are also mandatory rules that the governor has laid out, and other restrictions, and we want to communicate those. But the restaurants really are the ones that are going to have the most logistics to figure out, and that's why we pushed that information out last Friday. And, but we know we're going to get more questions, and we will want more engagement with our business community. with our business community to make sure that we're serving them as well as possible as they're trying to get on their feet. And so I hope that is, that answers your question.
No, I think it's great. One, you know, I'm looking forward, but also, you know, somewhat anxious about the opening up of businesses. But overall, I mean, I think it's going to be great for us economically. I would say, you know, one of the great things about our city, certainly the way that our city staff and the way that we've been operating and the engagement of our citizens is that, you know, we're agile enough to be able to accommodate and deal with some of these challenges. So I would just stress very strongly that, you know, whatever working group we put together that helps to serve the needs of the business community, whether they have questions or asks or needs, that we respond as quickly as we're typically known for. And so if we've got that committee, if we need to add additional resources, you know, I'm personally am willing to help. But I think it's going to be incredibly important for us to make sure that, you know, we get the information to our business owners to make sure that they understand, you know, how their reopening plans mesh with, you know, our understanding of state law and direction. And from an enforcement perspective, that, you know, we're out there helping folks do this in a smart way and make it, you know, easily capable for them to open up in a right way, too, that leaves them feeling comfortable with the way that they're operating their business. So again, I think it's important that we've got those resources for them to reach out to, to make sure that they understand exactly what's going on.
Thank you. Mr., so are we still on the first phase of the discussion? It's just about the EDA's actions and program?
Yeah, Mayor, I have some comments on that.
Yeah, of course. Go ahead then.
First of all, just echo the comments earlier. So thank you, Bob and Becky and the rest of the team for mobilizing so quickly. I think it's been really essential, just based on the messages we've heard back from the businesses, how, you know, the $2,000 is meaningful for them. So thank you for getting that out there quickly. I would definitely support a round two. So I think when the EDA discusses that, I would encourage you all to think about that. One quick note is that the George Mason Senior Class gift is actually going to be contributing to that fund. So I thought it was great news and a way to go for thinking about contributing their gift to help support small businesses. So hopefully that'll add to the pot of money that we've got. Second, something for the EDA to also think about is similar to what Ross was thinking. I think that the EDA is actually well-positioned to actually help businesses with reopening. I think the reopening process, as we can expect, is going to be difficult and expensive. So besides the grant process, I think one big role that you cannot play is help push out those guidelines and help be our ears on the ground and hear from the businesses what they need. I think the list that we are looking at now is a good start, and clearly the top two is, one, we need to know what the rules are, and two, we need help sourcing the cleaning supplies so we can open safely. So I think that's a good position, I think, the EDA to be in. The second area, I think, in general for government is, I think we've seen our businesses do a nice job innovating and pivoting to kind of new ways of operating. And so to the extent that we can get out of their way and provide flexibility, whether that's with outdoor dining, relaxing rules for where they can vend, I think it's important for government to get out of the way and let the private sector kind of figure out how they can expand safely so that we can safely move to the next phase and help the economy rebound, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments at this time from Mr. Young or Ms. Witzman? All right. You all are certainly welcome to continue on and stay with us during our meeting. Mr. Shields, do you have another item you'd like to speak to?
Yes, Mayor. If I could touch on a couple of other things and just as we, you know, with the EDA grant program, I also just want to recognize Susan Finirelli, who was really helpful in this program, both in the publicity for it, but also, I think, on the front end of the, receiving the applications as they came in. And then Kieran Bawa and our finance team, working with Becky and Val and the team and Naomi on getting the checks cut. So it was a big team effort and really pleased that we were able to get that program moving so quickly.
Mr. Shields, before you move on, do you mind if I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So I presume, and maybe this is for the city attorney or Ms. Bawa, I presume that funds the EDA expends are considered a reimbursable expense under the CARES Act, even though it's not technically the city of Falls Church. It's a sort of a political subdivision of the city of Falls Church. Is that accurate? In other words, the EDA, an EDA expenditure would qualify as a city expenditure for purposes of the CARES funding reimbursement?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but I can certainly check on it.
Okay. I think that would be helpful to know. And it could be that it comes through the city. If it's not, you know, through the EDA, maybe the money could come through the city in a different fashion.
So Mayor Tortor, just a couple of notes on that. Cindy Mester has been appointed to a statewide committee with the Virginia Municipal League to go through, sort of to help develop guidelines for localities across the state on the use of CARES funds. And so she'll be very helpful to us as she's working in that committee and bringing that information back home for us. I think we're presuming that that type of activity is reimbursable, but we'll get that confirmation. One other note on the CARES money, we are putting together a, essentially a draft budget for the use of the $1.2 million of CARES funds over the next eight months, you know, between now and the end of December. And I think the key thing for everyone to be thinking about as we think about this money is, I think it goes a lot to what Councilmember Snyder was speaking to and Vice Mayor Connolly. I think the intention of the use of these funds is to help with the testing, contact tracing, and isolation or quarantining efforts. Those are sort of the three things that all have to work together for us to really sustain a suppression of this epidemic and get our economy functioning again. So that in our budgeting, we're going to try to, even though we don't have very good guidance yet on exactly how the dollars will be used for those purposes, I think every health expert and certainly our local health expert, Dr. Gloria Adua Yensu with Fairfax Health, really always points to those three things, sort of institutionally, that we're going to have to do to suppress this epidemic, along with the personal behaviors, which are all the most important and the most basic, of washing our hands, not touching our faces, and maintaining social distancing. So looking ahead, we do also recognize that that $1.2 million is going to start going really fast once people start putting on the table all their potential uses and all their ideas for the use of that. We want to do that work quickly, get back to the council with her initial thinking on that, and we'll need to really put our strategic hats on to use that money as effectively as possible. A couple other notes. Council had asked if we could have a town hall on the, possibly similar to what we had back in March, of information for our community about where we are in the course of this epidemic, what the reopening process is going to look like, and get as much information out to the public about our plans and helping with that effort. And so we're looking for a date to get that set and then we'll publicize that, but we'll want to work with council just to make sure that we're covering the information and the content that we think that it would be most useful for the community. A couple other notes. A thank you to our whole team who put together the virtual Memorial Day celebration, and it was very moving and very meaningful. And I want to just thank everybody who participated in that and who worked to put that together. And in today's daily briefing, which we send out every day, the link to that presentation and that virtual Memorial Day celebration is in today's news as it was over the weekend. Curbside Library Services, the library is providing curbside service. Right now, they're basically addressing people who put in a request for a library item. We're dealing with the backlog, essentially, right now of requests that came in since March. We're processing about 20 to 30 requests per day or pickups per day. And effective June 1, we think we'll have cleared out the backlog of reserves and then be able to address the new requests for library materials as they come in in more or less real time. So I want to thank our library staff for that work. I think we're the first library in Northern Virginia, certainly, that's offering that service. And we've been sharing our notes around the region about how to do it properly and how to sanitize the materials and how to, you know, have it contactless for the safety of our employees and the public. For our Rec and Park staff, tomorrow we will put out the announcement on our plans for summer programs and summer camps. We've been working very hard. It's an incredibly confusing time for everybody who's, A, trying to plan for their kid's summer, but also for staff and just trying to sort through what the best guidance is. And so tomorrow is our target date to get that information out to all of our devoted subscribers to our wonderful summer programs. One reopening bit of news, the judges of Arlington, of our judicial district have declared that on July 10th, they will be holding court here in the city of Falls Church in the Falls Church Courthouse and council chambers. So July 10th is our target date to get everything set up for that. All the hard work on that has been done, but of course, City Hall still, right now, is not open to the public. So we do have a team that's working very hard to plan for the area, our City Hall reopening process and make sure that that's handled appropriately. And that court date is one milestone in that reopening process. Our Housing and Human Services staff, I just want to thank them for all of their work that they've been doing, really from the beginning of this epidemic, to serve our vulnerable populations. And I just want to single out Lesland Barrow in particular, who is really our front line for many of our most vulnerable residents. And one use of Fairfax County's CARES money has been to provide hoteling for all of the homeless population in Fairfax County, including, in the Health District, Fairfax County Health District, including the city of Falls Church. And so our homeless population are currently being served in that manner, and our HHS staff have been instrumental in seeing that to happen. The last thing I want to note is sad news. Mike Woodfield, our Director of Public Works, has let me know that he is leaving the city effective June 19th to pursue an opportunity in the private sector. He'll be moving to the West Coast to pursue that opportunity. And so I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to thank him for that work. We will have a more fitting send-off for him before he goes. But Mike, thank you. I know you're in this meeting and just want to thank you for all that you've done to advance projects and to deliver services for the residents of the city. Thank you, Mike. We will be announcing who our interim Director of Public Works will be shortly, either by the end of this week or early next week. And then, as council does know, we have a vacancy freeze in effect, but this is a position where we will break that freeze and we will have a recruitment process for our Public Works Director. Very hopeful that we'll have very strong internal candidates and very strong external candidates and have a good competitive process for this really very visible and very important position for the city. That's all I have to report tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shields. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Shields?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I tried to get in there before, at the end of Mr. Young's report, and I don't know, you didn't hear me. So can I say one thing about that and then?
Of course. Absolutely.
So I also wanted to thank everyone in the EDA for all that they've done for our business community. And I was so impressed when they said we were the first community to get money into the hands of our businesses, and then Mr. Shields just said our library is the first to get things out. So way to go, Falls Church, for really making a difference. I'm really impressed with all of that. On the Memorial Day Parade, I had the opportunity to stop by the Grand Marshall's front yard yesterday, and Lindy Hockenberry was delighted and pleased and was having her own personal parade, sitting in her front lawn and waving to all the people that came by. So I took a very sweet picture of her that I hope will be in the news press, and she was just delighted to be the Grand Marshall. And then the last thing is, on the list of things that Mr. Young mentioned, banners for when we reopen. And I'm wondering if we could also use the Barb Cram banner in the city of Falls Church, the ones that are on the light poles, to also say we're reopened at some point and to use that same bright pink look. I know there are 12 banners and it's pretty easy to order them up and get some banners, but that would be a really great thing for Falls Church, to have that nice downtown, we're open for business.
All right. Thank you so much. Are there other comments or questions for Mr. Shields? If not, let's move to business.
Just two quick ones. First of all, I'd like to request that in connection with the EDA program, we heard the report on tonight, that in, on a monthly basis, how many of the businesses that we've supported with these grants actually open up and remain in business? The whole purpose was to support them during tough times so that they'd be in business afterwards. So I think it'll be interesting to see if, in fact, we've achieved that goal. Second thing is, I would like to have the city manager report back on how the city develops an effective infrastructure and supply chain for the kind of testing that our citizens may want to do and that our businesses may request as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Mayor, one quick follow-up question on that. Can someone just confirm, if we were to pull out that infrastructure for testing and able to lead that from a city perspective, would that cost on, that we've incurred, fall into that federal funding via state funding money?
So it would. And so this is a conversation we've been having, a deep conversation we've been having with, regionally and with the Health Department. And here's basically the question we posed to them. Can we use our CARES money to stand up testing, go out and procure the tests and stand up testing here in the city of Falls Church? And the response is that the testing is part of a program, that the way the county views testing is they're targeting where they know they have vulnerable populations because of either there's a known outbreak in an area, there's very dense housing, there's oftentimes multiple families living in housing units, and populations where there's a high concentration of essential workers, where they're going out to the job site and then coming back to this very dense housing. And so that's why they've put, Fairfax County's put the testing centers where they have. And they've not just done the testing. It's been coupled with a very robust contact tracing program where they get a positive test, they interview them, they do all the tracing of who they've been in contact with, and then they pay money for hoteling for these families if they live in a very dense housing situation. So that's how the county is using its CARES money. And when they, when we talk about doing it in the city of Falls Church, we certainly can do that, but those other sort of three legs of the stool need to function together. And so I think that's where we need to get to as a, as a region, to really stand up that infrastructure. But those three working together, that's really what the purpose of the testing is, is to help identify where the cases are and then remove those people from super-high-contact situations. And so in that context, places with less dense housing, like the city of Falls Church, is not a high priority for Fairfax Health under their criteria for how they would roll this program out. That's the information that we have, and that's kind of the context of the discussion. We're going to continue to look into this. That's really kind of our, what That's really kind of our, what we have to report tonight.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's great that we've got that money. You know, just looking at the initial criteria that would qualify for using that money, I think it's going to be a stretch, at least in the near term, based on those qualifications as to how we use that. But if testing is kind of that holy grail and abstinence of any kind of vaccine, I think that's one of the ways that we can be proactive in terms of contributing to the statistics that are driving a lot of these decisions. So, you know, I would support the notion of us helping to lead the way, at least for ourselves here in the city in terms of testing that involves contact tracing and involves housing individuals that have been exposed. I would support that. I'd hate to let that federal money go to waste in terms of how we're able to allocate direct costs to that. So I would certainly be in support of trying to be proactive and leading the way for our city as opposed to, you know, trying to continue to follow reactively what's happening at the state and federal level. So thank you all.
And just one other brief note on that. We don't have the full picture on this also, but I think testing may be a very important element to getting our schools open and operating again as well. And so I think that whole protocol is still being developed, but that could be a really important part of the puzzle.
Do we know, just on that Wyatt, do we, do we have any updates from the superintendent, from our friends at the school board in terms of what those requirements would be in terms of making sure that we reopen in the fall?
I think I probably, I need to defer to the superintendent. We have had conversations about it, but I, and I know they're working on a really wide spectrum of options. And when we think of, I was joking with Dr. Noonan that when you think of reopening City Hall or our city services, it's a really simple problem compared to the reopening question for our educators. And so I don't think they have the plan yet. I think they're working really hard to get it, but I need to let Dr. Noonan communicate on that. I don't want to get out or say the wrong thing.
Sure. I would just reiterate, yeah, I mean, it does seem to me, at least from, call it an armchair quarterback, I'm certainly not a doctor, but just following the conversation at the state and federal level, that testing, again, absent of a vaccine seems to be that silver bullet, so to speak, that helps guide a lot of these decisions. And so if, if that's where we need to allocate our money and our resources to get ahead of this proactively and certainly do our part, I would, I would advocate strongly for us trying to figure out a way to align our infrastructure to be able to accommodate that. Thank you. That's it.
I had a few comments and questions.
Of course.
So Wyatt, going back to Wreckin' Parks, you mentioned that camps will be announced tomorrow, but I think over email you might have shared information about our tennis courts and we received some updates or some public comment about tennis courts. Is that something that you can comment now?
Yes. We'll be opening up our park amenities, our tennis courts on Friday with the Phase 1 reopening. And with that, we will be putting some signs up to sort of laying out kind of the best practices. We'll want that for tennis only, not for, you know, congregations. The reason we closed them is that we were having big crowds of teenagers mostly using the courts for a whole range of fun things, but it, we felt like it was kind of a, not a, it was kind of an attractor. That's why we closed them, but we're looking forward to getting those opened back up again.
Great. Thank you. I think many people would look forward to that. And I think a good PSA for the community is that we all need to follow the rules. On camps, I think I noticed that Fairfax and Arlington actually have canceled camps for the entire summer. So I'm obviously concerned, obviously, for the working parents in those communities who rely on those camps for their primary mode of childcare. And I think as I've spoken before, I think the economic decision really needs to be tied to childcare. When we announce tomorrow, if we think we're going to have a different plan than Arlington and Fairfax, are we concerned about being oversubscribed and having a huge demand, given that we have our neighbors not opening their camps?
Well, you know, if we are oversubscribed, we're gonna, you know, we'll, we do give preference for city residents for our programs and so we would continue to do that. I think all the jurisdictions do that. But, you know, this has been a really difficult process. Our staff want to open these camps and these programs so badly and just figuring out how to do it has been really challenging. And so I have sent out, you know, their thinking to city councils so you have a sort of an advanced view of it, but I believe the announcement's going to be very much along the lines of what's been previewed.
And then the last thing is around masks. So the governor announced today that masks will be required this coming Friday in all indoor public settings and recommends it in general whenever people are in public. So city council's starting kind of the mask up nova campaign, which is kind of a PSA. And Wyatt had mentioned before, but I know that we've gotten some really great donations from seamstresses in town. I would love to be in a position where we can actually hand out masks to anybody who needs one. So I know that HHS, for example, has gone out to our vulnerable population and handed out donated masks. I would love for police officers, for example, to be see people who are out and about without masks, be able to hand them a mask. And so I'd be willing to help out in some sort of mask campaign, but I think that's a really nice way of, more of a carrot instead of stick approach to encourage mask wearing because I think kind of ubiquitous mask wearing is really going to be key to us opening and staying open to the extent that we can help provide masks to the community. I think that's a nice way to encourage that.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more thing to say.
Of course.
Before Mr. Whitfield leaves the meeting, I do want to say thank you to Mr. Whitfield for all that he's done in the City of Falls Church. In your time here, there have been so many public works projects that have been done, have been done quickly, have been done well, and really have served the community. So I thank you for all that you've done to make our city a better place and wish you the best in California.
Thank you very much. Are there other comments? Is there anything else you had, Mr. Shields?
No, sir.
Okay. And again, our thanks, as Vice Mayor just mentioned, Mr. Whitfield, we thank you for joining on this call, but more importantly, we thank you for your years of service to the city and all the great things that you have been doing. It's really had a, I think, a building boom in the past few years in the city and it's of great benefit to our community, so we greatly appreciate it. Let's move on now to the business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item?
Yes. And we're starting out with our public hearing items. So if anybody does have a comment for any of these public hearings, please send it to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. Send an email. I'm looking at them right now. So at the end of the public hearing or before the votes go on these public hearings, we'll read any comments that we receive. And the two budget related items we're addressing first are TO 20-05, Ordinance Fixing and Determining the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues and Appropriating Funds for the Fiscal Year 2021, General Fund, School Operating Fund, School Community Service Fund, School Food Service Fund, Cable Access Fund, Sewer Fund, and Stormwater Fund. And going along with that is TO 20-07, Ordinance Setting the Rate of Tax Levy on Real Estate for Tax Year 2021 and on Personal Property, Machinery and Tools and All Other Properties Segregated by Law for Local Taxation in the City of Falls Church, Virginia for Tax Year 2020.
All right. Thank you very much. And let me just ask the city attorney, should we or can we have the next item also included as, at least on the table with these other items?
I think these other items are here for public hearing and I actually, and I think the other one is here just on first reading, so I suggest that you do them separately.
No, I read them wrong. My apologies. I read the tax rate ordinance is going to number three, which it was actually going to number two. So I agree with you. You're right. Before we get started, I'd like to actually make a declaration or a statement if I could. I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 20-05, 20-06, and 20-07, the General Fund Budget, Capital Improvement Program and Tax Rates for Fiscal Year 2021. My wife's an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by the FY 2021 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. Vice Mayor Connelly, is there anything you might want to say?
I will say, I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 20-05, 20-06, and 20-07, the FY 2021 General Fund Budget, Capital Improvement Program and Tax Rates. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and therefore am a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by these matters. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Shields. Excuse me?
One other initial statement.
Yes.
Dave Snyder, I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TOs 2005, 2006, and 2007, the General Fund Budget, Capital Improvement Program and Tax Rates for Fiscal Year 2021. I've consulted with the city attorney who advised me that I'm not even required to make this declaration, but in any event, I am doing so. I wish to disclose that my adult daughter is potentially an employee of the Falls Church City Public Schools, having worked a number of years for Arlington Public Schools, and therefore may be a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by the FY 2021 budget. I can participate in these matters fairly objectively and in the public interest. Thank you.
All right. Thank you and good luck to her. So, Mr. Shields, is this going to be a presentation you're making or is this Ms. Bawa?
Mayor, if I could just say a quick word or two, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Bawa for a discussion on the markups, the changes that are in this budget relative to what was presented back on April 27th. And then after Ms. Bawa's comments, if I could just say a word or two about the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program and some discussions we've been having over the course of this past week. So just by way of introduction, the budget that is before the city council is an emergency budget. It's one that we had to put together really quickly with a lot of reductions in spending, a lot of freezing of programs, of vacancies, of projects in light of the worsening economic conditions associated with the coronavirus epidemic. This budget is approximately $2.1 million less than the existing 2020 budget. And of that $2.1 million, that includes a $500,000 reduction in the school board transfer. And so I just want to note from the beginning and our planning through this emergency, I really appreciate the work of Dr. Noonan and his COO, Kristen Michaels, and working with us to solutions. This budget also is about $5.4 million less than the budget that was presented to the city council back on March 9th, about two weeks before the epidemic really became a pressing emergency. So a lot has changed, obviously, and the council has scrutinized this budget very closely, but I think also with the understanding that we did have to move quickly and we're going to continue to evaluate the economy and continue to need to make adjustments as FY 21 unfolds. If I could turn it over to Ms. Bawa to just review the changes that have been made with the council's input and the changes that are now in the ordinance that's before you, and then I'll make a comment on the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. Ms. Bawa?
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of the council. So since the presentation of the revised budget on April 27th, our markup includes three changes. The first one being WAMADA substitute relief that we got through WAMADA, the additional CARES funding that they were able to distribute to jurisdictions, and our portion of that was $385,000. And after addressing NMTA 30% gap, we are able to fund the NTC program, $100,000 for that, and $180,000 towards sidewalk and street light improvements. And those both are included as part of the CIP item that's going to be presented shortly. The second change that has been included in the markup is the addition of an assistant registrar position to assist with the upcoming elections and the mail-ins that we're getting, the excessive work with that. That's going to be funded partially with CARES funding and partially internal savings that we have and swap of temporary budget in the registrar's office. The third item that we are able to, that was included in the markup, is CARES funding, $45,000 of CARES funding for emergency rent relief program. And all these three have been addressed in the revised ordinance that is attached with the staff report. If there are any questions, happy to answer.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Shields, did you want to speak again? I can't remember from your introductory remarks whether you wanted to speak at this point or a later point.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Tarter. Just, there's been a good deal of discussion about the spot improvements and about the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program and how it's treated in this budget. And as Ms. Bawa just noted, when we look ahead to FY 21, we did take the benefit of the reduction of the WAMADA money, WAMADA requirements from, you know, for the city subsidy, and we, we took all those savings and put them into the NTC and to the Spot Improvements budget. So that's for FY 21. That really takes us back to where we were back on March 9th with the budget that was presented. The other big point of discussion through this budget process has been about the administrative hold that's been placed on prior city council appropriations, namely the $400,000 that was appropriated in February for Neighborhood Traffic Calming and the $100,000, which is in the 2020 budget for sidewalk spot improvements. And I did just want to clarify that those issues, which have been discussed quite a bit, are not part of the 2021 budget. Those are really just subject to me as the city manager directing staff to be cautious about spending funds in light of the downturn on revenues. And so I know that there probably will be discussion about that administrative action tonight, and we're happy to take council's guidance on that. I've tried to be pretty across the board with blanket freezing on spending, and certainly the council's prerogative if they want to prioritize certain things to be, to be released. But that's a separate discussion. I guess my point in raising it is, it is a separate discussion from the ordinance that's before you, which addresses the FY 2021 budget. The only other thing I will note is that on the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, we, we finished up the Gundry and Annandale project and had a cost savings of about $15,000 or, you know, there's $15,000 left in that account that was not spent on that project. And it is our intention to use those dollars, that's not subject to the freeze, to address the signs, some painting of sort of low-cost traffic calming projects that are projects that have, you know, that are in the queue right now. We might not be able to get to the heavy solutions immediately, but to try to get some light solutions out in the meantime, using that $15,000. So I wanted to provide that bit of context and now would be happy to answer any questions and then take council's direction on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Let's open it up to questions. Before we do, I just ask the clerk once more, is there any public comment that's been received?
Ah, sorry, couldn't find it. No, sir, we haven't received anything yet.
All right. Could you read?
Fallschurchva.gov.
Great. If you get any comment, please let us know.
We certainly will.
Now I'm going to open it up to council comments. Are there any comments, questions, or requests from council?
Could I start with one that hopefully won't take long?
Of course.
Wyatt, where in the firmament of the budget, either this fiscal year or next, do the traffic signal boxes that have been bulky fall? I'm thinking particularly of the one right in front of City Hall, which occasionally flashes and occasionally, you know, cycles through properly. Sometimes when I go by at work, sometimes it doesn't. Also, at the corner of Broad and West, for a while, we've had some issues with the short, short cycling, the green light there. Those are the kind of things that, you know, you hear from us because we hear from constituents. And it's been my understanding that, you know, we've got some sort of contractor, the equipment's no good. Where does the money to fix those problems fall? Is that in the item we're discussing now or is that? problems fall? Is that in the item we're discussing now, or is that fall into the $400,000 we're supposed to talk about later?
That actually is in neither. It's in the Public Works Department's operating budget for signal maintenance. And Mr. Whitfield is, I believe, still on the call, and maybe Mr. Whitfield can give a fuller answer?
Sorry, I'm still doing.
I put you on the spot there. So, but if you're able to speak to it.
Okay. What am I speaking about?
I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't have done that. The question was just about our traffic signal maintenance budget, which is in the DPW operations budget. And maybe just a question on the, how much money is left in that line item, or, because that's the money we're using to fix these bulky signals where we've been having problems in various locations in the city.
Yes, so I don't know what the exact dollar amount is left into that budget, but I do know that we've been having some, making some headways and still having some problems with some of the signal equipment. So, we do have some plans to replace some additional equipment so that we can maintain this, these things and keep them going. I think you've all seen a lot of these going flash quite often, which is difficult to chase down. So, I can give you maybe later this week a description of all the improved or improvements that we're going to be making here in the next few weeks, if that would help.
I sure would appreciate that, because I'd love to be able to forward that note to any constituent who asks, you know, what's going on with the blank, just so that they know that we know that the problem is there, we've identified it, and we have a timetable, and, you know, most importantly, we've got the money to deal with it, because we have enough money to deal with that, that level of problem, I think.
Okay. And we do have some overlapping programs. Some of those programs, you know, obviously the NTC comes into play with the operating for the signal equipment. And we've got some other small improvements that, as they come up, and we get citizen input and concerns and from others. So, those do change quite a bit. It's a moving target. But I'll do the best I can to put something together, maybe this week, and send over to you.
Great. Yeah, I mean, I understand there's overlap with NTC, but I'm really just talking about things that are, you know, specific signals that, you know, and you know which ones they are, that are chronically bulky, bulky. And, you know, I would just love to knock those out by the first of July so that we can move on to bigger things and, you know, give folks confidence that we can do big things, because we've got the little things taken care of.
Okay. All right. Apologize for not paying attention. I was multitasking.
Mr. Shields, this is Kiran. If I may add the fiscal piece to this, the current year's budget includes, has an available funding of $70,000 for traffic signals for fiscal year 2020. And Mr. Whitfield will provide you the details on the spending plan for that.
All right, thank you very much. Are there other questions or comments?
Yeah. Can I make a plug while we're talking traffic signals? Mike, if you're listening, I think in the past, we've talked about looking at opportunities where we can program other LPIs, so the leading pedestrian indicators, where pedestrians get priority and kind of everything else is red, and you only get the white walk signal. That's another kind of free or cheap way to kind of be a more walkable community, especially now during the pandemic when we have a lot less car traffic. I think it's a good opportunity to not, for pedestrians not have to push buttons too. So, as we look at the remaining budget in FY 20, I would love to prioritize those things.
Okay.
All right, what else you got? Ms. Hardy, anything else?
That's it for now.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
I've got a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, of course, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Yeah, so I appreciate the revisions that staff have made to the budget. Generally speaking, I'm in support of it. To the comments related to the $400,000 in NTC money and the $100,000 in spot improvement, which are technically related to fiscal year 2020 and have just had an administrative hold, in all fairness to citizens that may be watching, folks who may be watching this closely, I think a lot of people see this linked. This was surplus money that was designated in 2020. For fiscal year 2020, it's part of other funds that were allocated for other projects. And I, for one, would like to know that we're going to deploy some of that money and would like to request that we deploy some of that money and link it to the approval of this budget, so that it is a firm directive from our elective body to cater to the wishes of the folks that have been asking for this. So, I know there's been a lot of conversation about how we would use this money, and I am certainly cognizant of the fact that things have been changing from an economic perspective here in the city, and that we may want to revisit some things in June and September. But I'd like to make a motion, one, assuming there are no other, no other comments, that we approve this budget but amend it, make an amendment that we release $200,000, half of that from the, or direct the city manager to release from that administrative hold $100,000 in NTC and $100,000 in spot improvement now, and we can revisit the rest in June when Kiran brings back the numbers and gives us a bit of a prognosis in terms of where 2020 is. So, my motion again is to amend this budget for fiscal year 2021 with the directive to have the city manager release that $100,000 in NTC, leaving $300,000 in the bank, so to speak, and then the additional $100,000 in spot improvements.
Okay, so I would ask, as far as the motion goes, just to have the city attorney comment, and would the motion need to include approval or a motion to approve TO-20-05 as part of that as well? But I would, I would appreciate the city attorney just making sure the form of the motion is proper, or does she have, do you have any comments on that?
I just, I have a question, first of all, because is the $400,000 in this budget? But it's on hold. So, the only change, I'm just not clear on what the change is that's being suggested. Is the change to release those funds from being on hold essentially in this budget?
This is Kiran. Carol, just to elaborate a little bit more, the ordinance before council tonight is for fiscal year 2021 and does not include any fiscal year 2020 funds in there. However, the council, or council member Lichtenhouse, would like to provide, or the council collectively would like to provide guidance to the city manager to expend specific funding for the current year, through the current year's budget, which is not part of the 21, so it's a completely separate action.
Right. So, it's not really, as I see it, it's not really an amendment to approving this budget. It's a sort of a separate motion on something else, on funds that we have now that are extended into, to be used later, but out of the 2020 budget. Is that correct? How that would work?
I guess, let me, let me be clear, and then you guys can figure out the logistics of this. I guess what I'm saying is, I personally am not going to vote to approve this 2021 budget if $200,000 of the 2020 surplus money is not directed to be released and spent immediately for traffic calming and spot improvement. So, I don't know what the mechanics are of linking the two, but that is what I'm proposing.
So, this is Dave Snyder. Here's a suggestion. One motion, one motion with two parts. Motion to approve the 2021 budget, and that second part of the motion is to withdraw the administrative hold on $200,000 to be spent on neighborhood traffic calming and signal improvements. I don't see a problem why we can't make that motion. We're not amending the 2021 budget.
Right.
But we are moving to approve that budget and moving to redo, to, to withdraw the administrative hold on $200,000 of 2020, or whatever year it was.
Right.
Money for use for additional traffic calming and signal work.
And I think that can be done. Essentially, it's two motions, and if, if Councilman Lichtenhouse requires that you do the release of the administrative hold first, so that he feels comfortable supporting the 2021 budget, you could do it that way. But I think you have two, two motions for separate things.
I'm fine with that.
All right, so we have a motion, or do we have a motion?
I have a motion, yeah. So, the, the original motion to feel comfortable with passing, the motion which is approving this 2021 budget, that motion is to direct the city manager to release and expend for traffic calming projects $100,000 from the fiscal year 2020 surplus money that was allocated, as well as $100,000 for the sidewalk and spot improvements.
All right, so we have a motion, and I would ask the city attorney, you had, the motion is, to your mind, proper and acceptable in its current form?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second, Snyder.
So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Let's have discussion about this.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, of course.
So, I had, in our last meeting, we talked about this, and I had developed the hope that by the end of June, the total $400,000 might be allocated. I'm just concerned that what we're talking about tonight becomes a ceiling and not a floor. I mean, my, my hope last time was that we would see our way clear by the time we voted on the CIP to have instructed the manager to give him all that $400,000, and that he would begin doing so, you know, tomorrow, and finish by the end of June. Is this, how, how does this match up with that hope that I had?
So, Mr. Mayor, I could respond to that if you'd like.
Of course, yes.
Nothing here takes that additional money off the table, and I think Councilmember Lichtenhouse indicated that that was his hope. But I think the sense of this motion is we not wait for at least a part of that.
Okay, other questions or comments, or Mr. Shields, or Mr. Whitfield? Does anyone from the city have any comments?
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, of course, Vice Mayor Connolly.
I really appreciate Mr. Lichtenhouse's passion for traffic calming projects. Since I can't see this in front of me and we're ready to vote on our final budget, I can't support it, because I can't see what it means or where it's coming from. Also, it's May 28th, and the new fiscal year starts in 34 days, or it's May 26th. So, it seems to me that there wouldn't be many projects getting done in the next month, so it's more a symbolic move. So, I will not support this one, but I do appreciate Mr. Lichtenhouse's passion for making sure that neighborhood traffic calming happens.
I'd like to just make a comment there. It's kind of the way, I certainly appreciate that position. Frankly, waiting another 24, 48 hours, in my opinion, is too long. We've been talking about some of these projects for years. I know exactly where this money is coming from, and it's coming from surplus money, money that was generated from economic activity and cost savings at the government level. And again, even putting this money to work over the next couple of weeks is two weeks too long. This should have been done a long time ago. And frankly, I think it's a good compromise that I'm only requesting that a couple hundred thousand dollars of this be put to work. And then the truth of the matter is, we will find, or there could be another excuse, another reason for us to push this money down the road and not use it. I don't expect our economic situation or our story to get much better. And I think that this is something, frankly, that takes precedent over other things that we could be considering. I'm not proposing any kind of tax rate increase. I'm frankly proposing the small amount of anemic funds that were already allocated to these particular initiatives that were at the request of our voters. And again, it may sound like it's only 30 days, but 30 days, in my opinion, is a lifetime when we've been waiting several years, when this money should have been allocated. And remember, this money came from surplus money, which a vast majority of that has already been committed and spent within about 48 hours after we allocated that money to begin with. So, it is well past due that we put this money to work, and I'm asking only for a portion of it, and we can revisit the rest. Allocating this money is not going to require us to increase tax rates. It's not going to require us to have to furlough or lay people off. It is money that has been allocated, should be allocated, and should be spent, and should quickly be put to work immediately after this action tonight.
So, other comments, questions?
Mayor, I had a question.
Yes.
Wyatt, so going back to the FY 21 budget, so we've restored now $280,000, Kiran, correct me if I'm wrong, $100 towards traffic calming and $180 for kind of streetlights, sidewalk improvements?
That's correct.
Okay. Will your recommendation be to put that $280 on hold, because I don't want to be back where we are now?
Well, those are NVTA funds. So, given the color of the money, we are aligning our NVTA projections with the presentation that was provided by the staff a couple of weeks ago, and not exceeding the, those projections. So, I would recommend that we can continue with that work. However, the funding that we have in fiscal year 2020, we are using our local dollars in there, and we do not have a whole lot of data on actual collections for, on our revenues. So, it's very difficult to gauge the revenue shortfall. I will definitely have a better picture in June, but I do not have a whole lot of data at this point to project how much we may be in a position that we could use all of it. We may be in a position, we may have to leverage some of it as, as an offset. So, all that will unfold in June.
Okay, so recap, make sure I'm understanding. So, because the $280 in FY 21 budget is coming from NVTA money, which should go towards transportation, staff's recommendation is that that $280, which will be available come July 1st at the beginning of the new fiscal year, not be on hold?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, in total, if Mr. Lichtenhouse's motion passes, we'd have $200 from FY 20 plus an additional $100 from FY 21 that would be available. Is that correct?
So, based on the motion that Mr. Lichtenhouse is making for NTC, there will be $200,000, $100 from this year, and $100 from next year, and $180,000 for sidewalks and streetlights in next year, and $100,000 for spot improvements in this year.
Oh, got it. Yes, he was taking the $200 from FY 20 and splitting it between spot and, okay. Thank you, that helps clarify.
Let me ask, I have to say, I do have some reservation about spending money when we're on the cusp and knowing some more information about what could be a difficult time financially for the city. I wonder if Mr. Lichtenhouse would consider a smaller number. I'd feel more comfortable with a number more like $100,000 than $200,000. Do you have any comments on that, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah. Yeah, I would be okay with that. If that's what it's going to take for us to get this small amount of money to work, I'd be, I would consider that, yes. I'd be okay with that.
All right. So, what I could see happening is that the money that's saved from Gundry Drive, or the underspending, or whatever you want to characterize it as, is 15. And then, I understand there's also a little bit of money for maybe public works and signage that hasn't been spent. And so, we could be talking about pulling maybe $75,000 or so from reserves at this time, as opposed to the full amount. And so, that, to me, that's much more palatable, given that there's a lot of uncertainty in the coming weeks. And so, anyway, that's something that I think I would feel much more comfortable with.
So, we're talking $100,000 total?
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Do other folks have comments on that?
Uh, I, I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, of course.
I, I'm trying to recall a time when I had less understanding of what it is that I'm voting money to be spent on. So, is, is the notion that this would go to the Great Falls Little Falls project chiefly because that's the most ready and raring to go? And if so, can somebody give me an update on what the community buy-in on that project is? I'm just concerned that, you know, we need to spend the money, we need to do the work, we need to do it planfully and inclusively, so that we don't end up setting, you know, one neighbor against another, because we have hurried the process of, you know... one neighbor against another because we have hurried the process of, you know, designing a project. I mean, we've been talking about some of these things for not years, but decades and there's a reason for that. It's not just money, it's because, you know, the neighbors don't all always agree on what needs to be done. And I just want to make sure that that process has been thoroughly gone through before we commit the staff to spending the money.
So first off, just disclose, I do live on Little Falls Street by way of disclosure and my understanding, secondly, was that Mr. Lichtenhouse was advocating for kind of very quick, near-term projects, but maybe you could elaborate or the city manager could elaborate on what specific projects?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. I'm not advocating for a specific project. There are numerous projects out there and I'm not asking for our council to make a decision to choose winners or losers tonight. I'm simply asking for us to put money back into the budget or put money to work that we had already designated was needed. I would leave that up to city staff to determine exactly whether that money would be allocated. So we are not talking about specific projects. We are simply talking about putting money to work that had already been designated as needed out of funds. Again, this is the same money that went to fund the library, fund City Hall, went to fund other projects, so it's out of the same bucket and it's up to the city staff to determine exactly how that needs to be prioritized. So it's very clear in my mind, we're not picking winners or losers, we're simply reinstating funds to implement projects that we know that we've already been, we've already got on the schedule. And most of those, I would assume, would be light solutions because we're talking about a paltry $100,000 here.
All right, are there other comments on this proposal, this idea?
Mayor, I just have a comment.
Yes.
So I would support the revision to that amendment as proposed. I guess I will want to get into specifics of NTC though, because I do have concerns about what is next in the queue. And I think when we are limited in funds, I think it's important for us to think about kind of creative ways that we can dress as many solutions, as many streets as possible. So I know that the Great Falls Little Falls one, besides having some community concerns, I think, I want to make sure that that really is going to be the best use of the money because that might take the entire budget that we are talking about. And so if there are cheaper solutions that the CACT, for example, might recommend and/or lighter solutions that we can tackle a few other streets, I would support that and I'd ask staff to look at that if that amendment does go through tonight.
All right, any other comments? Do we want to take, take a vote then on the revised motion? And the, the motion has been revised, correct?
Would anybody like to hear what we have for the motion?
Yeah, sure.
Can we have two separate motions, one to add an amendment and then to pass the budget?
Well, we just have one motion before you currently and that is the motion to remove the administrative hold to the tune of 200,000. 100,000 of that would be neighborhood traffic calming and the other 100,000 would be spot improvements. If council, if someone wants to amend the motion before you, you need a motion for that and act on the motion to amend it. And then, then you can, you would vote first on the motion to amend and then vote either on the original or amended motion.
So just for clarification, two things. One, Ms. Connolly, we have not yet got to the actual budget for this year. This ordinance, it really relates to the disposition of money that is not part of this year's budget, is my understanding. And so Mr. Lichtenhouse has a motion that's been seconded and so to alter that, we have to go ahead and amend it and that could be with Mr. Lichtenhouse's permission. It sounds like he's agreeable to that. And so I would just ask the city attorney as far as procedure to amend that, since it's already been seconded, Mr. Lichtenhouse can't adopt an amendment to his own motion, correct?
I think that's right. I think I would recommend that if you're going to have a, if you want to change that motion, somebody make the motion to amend the current motion and then you proceed with that and decide whether to amend it or not.
Do, okay. Do you know what the, the actual motion is that's on the table?
It's, it's, go ahead.
The motion is, there has been a direction to staff to not spend the, not today, not tonight, Celeste.
I just want the actual, like the actual words of the motion. I have.
The motion was, hold on.
I have what Mr. Lichtenhouse said.
Right.
I think just before Mr. Snyder seconded, so I could read that and then see if I'm incorrect. I guess.
Go ahead.
Okay, so there was a motion to direct the city manager to immediately release and utilize $200,000 for neighborhood traffic calming and sidewalk spot improvements out of FY2020 surplus allocation, out of the FY2020 surplus allocation.
Yes, that is the current motion.
Is that correct, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
That's correct.
And Mr. Snyder?
That's, that's correct. That's the current motion.
And so the question, and the question and discussion previously was, could we change that number to 100,000? And it seemed like that was agreeable, but I, I guess I would ask the maker of the motion and the secondor of the motion to confirm that.
Correct. Secondor confirms.
Well.
And so do we need a motion then to amend? Yes.
You should have a motion to amend, yes.
Okay, let's do the motion to amend. So would someone like to move to amend the motion on the table to change the amount from 200,000 to 100,000?
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend Mr. Lichtenhouse's original motion to 100,000 total to be released and expended towards traffic calming and spot improvements.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Snyder seconds.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend and a second. Let's take a vote on that motion, the motion to amend. And unless there's any comments, I'll go ahead and, let's go ahead to that motion.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask one thing before you go to the vote is, are you continuing to have the 50-50 split of that money to neighborhood traffic calming and spot improvements? That was part of the initial motion.
Yes.
It was? Okay.
All right, so we have a motion that's on the table, we have a motion to amend that's on the table. This would not be voting for the actual motion, this is just voting on the motion to amend it to the 100,000 number. And let's go, let's go through that then. Madam Clerk, will you call that motion?
Yes. Ms. Connolly?
No.
Mr. Duncan? Did we lose Mr. Duncan?
Yes, I guess.
Oh, here he's back. And was that a yes?
Yes, I guess, yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes. Okay, so now we have a motion that's been amended.
Okay, yeah, that carries, so we go back to the original motion.
So now we're going to go and vote on the motion as amended.
Correct.
This is just as if there was, the original motion was for the 100,000 number. So, Madam Clerk, will you call this vote?
Ms. Connolly?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
The motion carries five to one. Thank you.
All right, so let's go on now. Do we have a motion regarding the actual budget itself? So the motion we just had was not the budget, this was just the disposition of some funds, the release of some funds. We now should have a motion regarding the actual budget itself.
I believe Mr. Lichtenhouse is going to make that motion, isn't he?
Somebody.
It'd be great if you could reference the TO number.
Got it. Does someone have a motion they'd like to make?
Mayor, I move to adopt TO 20-05.
All right, do we have a second?
Second, Snyder.
All right, before we take a vote, Madam Clerk, is there any comments that have been received from the public?
I will check one more time. There is no further comment.
Okay, unless there's no further comment as well from council, please call the vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, two, two quick comments, thanks. Number one, the, the ability to, to come up with additional money for neighborhood traffic calming and spot improvement was the result of combined work. Thank you very much, Cindy Mester in particular, and we've worked really, really hard on Womata issues, so both at the elected level and, and staff level, number one. Number two, in recognition of some of the sacrifices in this budget, forgone two months of city council salary to help contribute. So thank you all very much. This is a budget that I'm sure, except under extraordinary circumstances, we would not be passing, but a lot of leadership shown by this council and by the staff to deal with these extraordinary circumstances. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and I would also just add, I recently got together by social distancing and the wearing a mask with the school board chair, Mr. Anderson, who I would say is quite understanding of the city's financial situation. And I would just note that I greatly appreciate both his, the school board superintendent and the school community's cooperation with this difficult time. Madam Clerk, will you go ahead and call this vote?
I will. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, council.
All right, do we have a motion regarding the tax rate?
Mr. Mayor, I move the approval of TO, what is it, TO?
20-07?
Right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment as to the tax rate?
No, sir. Not that we haven't already covered.
Any further comment before we go to a vote? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have TO 20-13, ordinance to ensure the continuity of the Falls Church City Government implementing emergency procedures, modifying public meeting requirements and public practices and procedures in order to address continuity of operations associated with the COVID-19 pandemic disaster. And this also is a public hearing. If there are any comments, city clerk@fallschurchva.gov.
Let me just ask again, the city attorney, looks like we have three related items here, unless I'm reading wrong. Is that right? I'm talking to the county attorney or city attorney. Carol?
But, yes, they are.
I was, I was talking to myself on mute.
That's okay, I talk to myself but not on mute all the time.
Yes.
Can, can we hear the three of these items together and take action separately?
You could have, you could read them all and have a hearing on which anyone can speak on any of them and then do the three motions separately, yes.
Why don't we go ahead and do that, Madam Clerk? Will you call the other two related items?
Yes, we have ordinance 2007, emergency ordinance to provide business relief during the COVID-19 pandemic to extend the due date of the second installment of the 2020 real estate tax from June 5th, 2020 to July 6th, 2020 and to temporarily suspend payments of meals and transient occupancy taxes. And then the second one is a readoption of ordinance 2008, emergency ordinance to suspend enforcement of zoning regulations that limit outdoor conduct of business and placement of temporary signs in order to grant temporary relief from conditions caused by the COVID-19 pandemic.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say that this, these three were put together in the early days of this crisis and really thank the city attorney for putting them together. They followed a lot of the model ordinances developed through the local government attorneys. But I would also just note that this last one is particularly relevant right now as we are helping restaurants expand their outdoor dining. Jim Snyder and the zoning team really anticipated that this was going to be a need and, you know, over a month and a half ago now made sure that that was written into our emergency ordinances so we could help them with that. And I also just want to note, thanks to everybody who's been participating in these virtual meetings, it's been a challenge. Celeste Heath in particular has done incredible duty in walking everybody through the process to do it in accordance with the FOIA laws and use the technology the right way and Cindy and the whole IT team. So all of our boards and commissions have been great sports as we've been going through this and I think a lot of really good work has been done under this continuity of operations set of ordinances, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Dave Snyder, I do have one question for the city manager. City manager, if I'm a restaurant and I want to put a couple picnic tables out and be able to expand my business, how many permits do I have to get and how fast can I get those permits?
So the, what we're asking for is, is just to draw, you can draw it by hand, but just do have a, a plan for where your seating is going to be. And we're not even really calling it a permit, we're calling it an outdoor dining plan that we can use to, A, confirm that the landowner has given permission for it, particularly if it's taking up, you know, parking spaces and things like that and that your neighboring businesses understand what's happening and that, you know, it isn't causing conflicts. And also, if you're expanding out onto the sidewalk, we'd like to just have a plan for that so that we can make sure that it's going to be ADA accessible and, and those types of things. That's really the purpose of that plan. The goal is to make it, you know, a quick review and to help the, these restaurants, you know, provide their, you know, the, execute their business plan safely. I will note that there's no fees associated with any of these permits as well.
All right, thank you. Are there any other?
Quick follow-up question, Mr. Mayor, to that.
Yes, of course.
On the flip side of that, are there going to be any fines associated with it if folks are not able to get that permit in a timely fashion or need to operate without having that permit in hand at the time? I think it's important for us to try to lower as much regulatory burden as we possibly can for these businesses that are trying to open, so I want to make sure that, you know, folks feel like they've got that flexibility and we're not, on one hand, giving them a permit to help navigate things and then the other issuing fines if they don't have it in time.
Well, let me answer the question by just noting that, you know, through the most draconian shutdowns, we've not administered any fines to date. And I think that's really an indication of how responsible our business community has been. They've really worked hard to protect their employees and their customers and, you know, just hats off to our business community. And so we're not anticipating really big problems of, of non-compliance in the next phase. There could be some confusion and our big goal is to try to mitigate the potential confusion. What the enforcement strategies have been really from the beginning for a police department have been to go and to talk to, you know, sometimes it's, it's a group of kids, rarely it's a business that might be doing some things that have caused, we always hear about it, you know, if we do hear about it from other customers or from the public. And we'll go in, we'll talk with them and immediately it's rectified. So that's, that's what's been happening. What the official policy is, first to go and, and discuss and inform and educate and then on a second visit, there would be a note, a formal notice of violation and then on the third visit, there'd be an actual sanction, which could either be a fine or a closing down of the business. But we haven't gotten to step two so far in this epidemic.
That's great. Now, I would, I would hope and certainly expect that our business community would be as careful as they've always been, but I would ask that we be as proactive as possible in getting in front of these business owners to let them know that we have these permits and then be as lax as possible in, in getting them in compliance and helping them navigate this. I want to lower as many burden and regulatory burdens as we possibly can to get them back opening and functioning and selling as much as they can to get their businesses back up and running from the shutdown, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I do.
Yes?
Wyatt, in the vein of kind of the earlier comment of letting kind of people have as much flexibility and government getting out of the way, have we given some thought to kind of closing potentially lanes down so that we can extend dining areas onto the sidewalk while still allowing pedestrians to walk?
It's been discussed, there hasn't been a real big push from the business community for that. for that. It's, that does get complicated with VDOT. So, we haven't, like, charged out to go do that, like particularly on Route seven or other retail streets. I think we'll play that by ear. And if there becomes a big push to do it, then we will certainly try to work the problem. Where you have seen it in, like, in Seattle and places like that, we're talking about really dense urban places where the parking is all underground, and they just don't have places to expand. I think most of our business communities, most of our businesses do have area close to their business where they can expand and, and offer outdoor services. And so, I think that's probably how it's going to resolve. Happy to continue the discussion, but that's, that's the current thinking on it.
Great. If there's kind of public spaces that we think we can offer up beyond sidewalk to give people more room, I'd love staff to give that some thought, too.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, are there any comments from the public?
No, sir.
Okay, so let's do these one by one as far as the motions go. Do we have a motion regarding the first item, which looks like TO dash twenty dash thirteen? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TO twenty dash thirteen.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, council.
All right, the next item. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approval of TO twenty dash fifteen.
Is it fifteen or fourteen?
Actually, we are re-adopting ordinance two thousand and seven. This was because of the emergency. It has to be re-adopted with a public hearing. So, you already adopted it, you're just reaffirming it with a public hearing.
But is it twenty dash fourteen or twenty dash fifteen?
Ordinate, if you use ordinance two thousand and seven and then ordinance two thousand and eight, that would work. Those are just, yeah.
So, I think this one is two thousand and seven, if I'm reading this right.
That, right, that's the tax.
Okay, Mr. Snyder?
Sure, I'll move that.
Okay.
TO twenty dash fourteen.
Okay, that's ordinance two thousand and seven.
Right. Move to re-adopt ordinance two thousand and seven.
Great. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any comments?
No, sir.
All right, will you go ahead with the vote then?
I will. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yeah.
Ms. Hardy?
Hardy? Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Great, let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, I move to re-adopt ordinance two zero zero eight.
All right, do we have a second? Anyone on a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Lickenhouse on the second. Any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk?
Uh, no.
Uh, no.
All right, let's go ahead and move to a vote.
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Ms. Hardy? Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
So, our next items are resolutions and first readings of ordinances. And our first ordinance is TR twenty dash oh six, ordinance fixing and determining the FY twenty twenty-one and FY twenty-two, FY twenty twenty-six capital improvements program budget and appropriating expenditure and revenue funds for the fiscal year 2021 and reprogramming of previously appropriated funds.
All right, thank you very much. Is this Ms. Mester or Mr. Shields?
It is. Ms. Mester will give the presentation for our CIP. And thank you very much for all the hard work that's gone into this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Counsel, it's my honor to give an update on the CIP and present it for first reading. And as I do that, let me just take down for the moment the document. There we go. What I'd like to do tonight is just talk a little bit about the timeline and the planning commission's role in the CIP that's before you for FY twenty-one to twenty-six, highlight some key projects in the various component areas. And then, of course, we'll be glad to answer questions. As it relates to the timeline, this is, as the city clerk noted before you for first reading this evening, we are asking that you schedule the public hearings. I would note that we would do one on June eighth, your next council meeting, and then June twenty-second. June twenty-second would also be the meeting where you could consider for final adoption. As council knows, the CIP coming before you has been delayed to allow us to sort out revenues from the CARES Act, in particular WAMADA, and also the NVTA, thirty percent funds and seventy percent funds as they impact the transportation component of this CIP greatly. The city code and charter does require that the CIP be adopted by council within twenty-eight days of adopting your operating budget for FY twenty-one. So, with council adopting that this evening, if council adopts the CIP by June twenty-second, then we would be in compliance with that requirement. The CIP was presented to the planning commission back in February. They held two meetings around the CIP for presentations and questions and did adopt it. And the staff report before you this evening includes their full motion so that you and the public can read that in its entirety. Of course, the CIP was presented basically as the planning commission adopted it on March ninth. COVID-19 happened. Things were looking like we would have to reduce and change it dramatically. There are some changes in the CIP before you, but not as dramatically as we thought, as noted by Mr. Shields, Ms. Bawa, and acknowledged by Ms. Councilman Snyder's comments due to the WAMADA funding. That CARES Act funding that helped offset our WAMADA operating subsidy liability allowed us then to restore neighborhood traffic calming and the sidewalks and LED street light program. There are some other changes before you that I will highlight momentarily. Before I get into the projects in the FY twenty-one to twenty-six CIP, I do want to acknowledge, as we mentioned with reference to Mike Withfield's good works to date and the entire DPW, CPES, and finance team that makes up our CIP, we've done a lot of good work and we are continuing to work some good projects. Big chimneys is, of course, underway. The library is underway. We have quite a few transportation projects in terms of the South Washington Intermodal Transit Plaza. That contract is being finalized. We'll be coming forward to council for approval and we'll be able to start construction in July. We're working on Bearman Park road crossing implementation. We're finalizing design for South Maple and South Washington intersection. And as we've recently reported, we've had the opportunity to finish a couple NTC projects. That would be Annandale and Gundry and West Jefferson. We also have done and worked on some light solutions. For example, we've done some signage on Nolan. And with council's action tonight, I'll continue to work with the NTC team to make sure that we can do light solution and move forward some of those projects that are in the queue. In particular, we'll continue to work on Nolan, North Oak, South Oak, South Lee for light solutions, both in signage and painting. Lincoln has a long-term striping painting project, so we'll look at that with this funding. We have continued to work on community engagement for NTC. And those will be for the heavier solutions for when money more, becomes more available in FY twenty-one. And as we see how things like the state of good repair for Oak Street Bridge gets funded by the state when those holds are also lifted. So, we'll continue that. There was an earlier question about Great Falls, Little Falls. And I do want to acknowledge that we held the first community meeting last Thursday. We've had some more engagement of new residents and more volunteers for the working group. Got some really positive feedback, questions and concerns. So, staff is consolidating all those comments. The meeting was recorded and is now posted with all the other virtual board and commission meetings. So, that is available for the community members who couldn't participate to view. And we will reconvene and follow up with that community. That is a heavier solution project. And so, that will require, and we do want the full community engagement and consensus. And so, we'll work that parallel to executing these light solutions. So, that's sort of where we are in some of the current good work that we'll continue to keep implementing through this COVID period. Staff have been great at working virtually, working in the fields, doing a lot of Skype meetings and communication. Contractors are willing to respond to the city for our projects, and so we're able to proceed. Looking forward to the FY twenty-one to twenty-six CIP, it is a very robust and full CIP, very much focused on needed projects for our community to be consistent with council's vision and comprehensive plan. I'd like to highlight just a few in the transportation area, the general fund area, stormwater and sanitary. And I will note for council and the public, the full CIP notebook with all the project descriptions that was presented to the planning commission in February, as well as hard copies given to council, remains valid resource material. And it is posted in its entirety on the city's website under budget and capital improvements program. As it relates to transportation over the next six years, I'll focus tonight on the six years. The CIP does continue to have that full ten-year lookout, lookout so that we can look in advance for the four years post the standard six years so we can do long-range planning. But in this next six years, we are looking at South Oak Street Bridge for replacement so that the structural underpinning is improved, the pedestrian access is improved, which is a benefit to TJ and the Out to Greenways Down, but also will help with the South Oak Street Neighborhood Traffic Calming Petition and Input. That grant, we had been preliminary awarded it by VDOT staff. It would have been recommended in the next six-year improvement program. But as we noted with the state's budget amendment on April twenty-six, the Commonwealth Transportation Board has put on hold the six-year improvement plan until in the fall, just as we will need to do, revenues can be reassessed. So, that is on hold, but we are optimistic in the future for that to proceed. We want it adopted in the CIP, so when funding comes together, we'll be able to proceed on that important project. We've also got grant matches and grants pending for traffic signals. And meantime, we're continuing to work the design for North Washington and Columbia, South Maple and Annandale, Northwest and Great Falls implementation, looking at Annandale Hillwood, for example. So, a lot of good work in the traffic signal area. And we've, of course, discussed neighborhood traffic calming a fair amount. I do want to acknowledge the funding for the Greenways Down. Federal funding is still available and has not been put on hold. So, we'll be starting the community engagement work on that in the fall. The restoration of NTC and sidewalk and LED, LED lights into the CIP, as Ms. Bawa noted, with thirty percent money is positive. And so, we'll be able to continue those come July one. Staff does recommend in terms of the sidewalks and the LED light program that we start with the LED light conversion. It's ready to go because Dominion has the lights, the structure, and the infrastructure ready. They would mostly administer it. And we would have about forty-four thousand dollars a year in operating cost savings in the Public Works budget for utilities. And while that was being implemented, we would work concurrently with the CACT to develop the sidewalk program so we can see if it's a hybrid of like a community NTC program or if it's more administrative with some priority projects outlined that have grown out of NTC and the CACT's recommendation. So, because that will take some time and we want to start implementing, staff is recommending we start with the LED light conversion and concurrently work on developing the sidewalk program. The CIP, of course, holds the WAMADA funding for the capital and operating. So, that's publicly available to the community to see our commitment to WAMADA and the two pending NVTA grants for which the public input period closed May twenty-fourth. And a lot of good public comments and support were submitted for our Park Avenue Great Streets and our Shreve Road WNOD connection. The transportation CIP section, as I noted, is the highest and largest part of the CIP. It's about, over the six-year period, fifty-two million, of which thirty-seven million is grant funded. And then, we leverage quite a bit with just a small amount of match money. Under the general fund, we have facility reinvestment. We have reduced that from three hundred thousand to one hundred and twenty-five thousand because it's fully pay-go funded and we're being cognizant, obviously, of revenue impacts. That does align to the highest priorities provided by Public Works. Then, in the out years, we are recommending restoring back to the three hundred thousand per year. The CIP also includes funding for Fire Station Six to replace the ten bay doors, Fellow's Property Development, Master Park, Park Master Plan Development, and Practice Field Lights, which is the fifty-fifty partnership with George Mason High School. Those were all proposed to be debt financed, and those would be pursuant to the ordinance. That's before you put on hold for, before any issuance till the fall of 2020. So, revenues can be assessed. And by separate action, council would review and approve any bond issuance once the city manager and the CFO are able to assess the ability to maintain and pay the debt service. But they are in the CIP, so the projects would be approved, approved, and then the funding source for debt revisited in the fall. Stormwater is also in the CIP that's before you. It is, as, as I noted earlier, as the planning commission adopted it, that is the full robust plan of projects that would align with the Stormwater Task Force recommendations. Those would need to be debt financed. And so, those are also on hold till the fall, similar to the general fund projects, so that we could assess the ability of, the outcome of the rate study and ability to increase rates based on the economic conditions to support those projects. Similarly, sanitary sewer includes capacity growth for the new developments, looking at the development fees, as well as projects for our I and I maintenance restoration to ensure capacity. Those also will be revisited in the fall along with the rate study impact and recommendations would come separately to council. So, Mayor, that would be the highlights of the CIP that I presented to you in a modified form, but the full document is on the website. And staff recommends granting this first reading and proceeding to the two public hearings and final adoption on June twenty-second concurrent with the proper advertising to law. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Well, thank you for that very detailed presentation, all your hard work on this very detailed proposal and plan. Are there any comments or questions from council members?
Just one question for Cindy.
Yes.
Cindy, the NVTA's Planning and Coordination Committee is meeting tomorrow night. I've looked at staff materials. Have they issued their list of, you know, ranking of projects yet to you all? Or is that coming to me tomorrow night for the first time at the meeting? that coming to me tomorrow night for the first time at the meeting?
Staff have seen the preliminary listing and rankings, but we haven't seen the final recommendation, so we'll be seeing a concurrent.
Okay, so the question of where are two projects, particularly the Shreve Road, when falls on the scale, is something I'll learn when I dial in, call into the meeting tomorrow night.
The previous rankings had the Shreve Road WNOD at 17 and Park Avenue at 18, so the ranking pending, seeing what any of the public comment input, which is one of the core criteria, ranked in the same priority as council's adopted resolution.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Side note I would add, Mayor, sorry, as anticipated, just because of the funding constraints and the amount of ask that we heard from MBTA, it is anticipated only one of the city's applications will be recommended for funding.
Thank you. All right, other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, are there any public comments?
No.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, could I ask just one more question?
Yes.
Back to the South Washington Street project, Cindy. So you said that if all goes well with the contract, we'd begin to work in July. What's the timeframe for that to be done, once it's started?
I believe it is 18 months, and Mr. Whitfield's still on the meeting, I believe. So if I'm wrong, I'll ask him to jump in, but I believe the timeline, if I recall, for this project is about 18 months. Again, the undergrounding is already done, and Verizon's out moving the last of their lines underground, and so this will be for the remainder of the streetscape and road improvements.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments, or do we have a motion?
Cindy, is the South Maple-South Washington intersection improvement on a similar timeline as the rest of South Washington?
That will be a little farther behind, but we are at, working with VDOT on the final designs for that. And the CIP item that is before you, and thank you for that question, because let me highlight that in the ordinance on page, on line 251, there is a transfer of previously appropriated funds from our infrastructure pavement program over to South Washington POA in the amount of 475,000. That actually will be going into the program, and the specific project will be South Maple and South Washington. We need that funding in order to complete the project. And once we get the designs approved, which we anticipate this summer with the final VDOT review, then we'll be able to go through the contract award, and so it'd probably be starting more into the fall for construction.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, Snyder moved to grant first reading to TO 20-06, schedule of public hearings for June 8 and June 22, schedule of second reading and final consideration for June 22, and advertise the same according to law.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is that Ms., Vice Mayor Connolly on the second?
Yes, yes.
All right. No additional public comment, I assume, Madam Clerk?
No.
Let's go ahead and move to the motion then, to the vote.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Yes, it's TR 20-22, Resolution to Approve an Easement for Dominion Energy Virginia to Place a Pole and Overhead Service at the Property Yard to Support School Bus Operations to the Requested Easement Site Located at the Northern Property Line and to Authorize the City Manager to Execute the Deed.
All right, Mr. Shields?
Mr. Whitfield, would you like to handle this?
Certainly. So this is a pretty simple project. All of the school buses that currently have moved over to the property yard, those are in the vicinity of some of the property that we took back from the Volvo dealership. And so the issue with no power over there is the buses, some of them are diesel, so they do need block heaters during the winter, and then also when they're not being used, they need battery chargers. Right now, we're just running a bunch of extension cords, putting generators out there to get these things maintained, and so this will take care of that. Plus, if we do move additional buses in the area over there, that'll accommodate those as well.
All right, any questions or comments? I've got one or two then. So this is Dominion Virginia Power. Is this just, it looks like, is there a box here? It's like just a square, right? It's not for like a line also?
So the lines will be underground, whatever we put in down there. This is for the location of a pole, and that's all that's going to be there is a pole. There'll be some sort of a transformer that goes with it.
Okay, and so they need an easement for the poles at their pole or our pole?
That'll be their pole.
Gotcha, okay. And can we relocate this easement if need be? We want to redevelop the property yard? Does this have provision for relocation?
It does.
Yeah, I believe it does, yeah.
Okay, and this doesn't service anything else, right? This is just to serve our property, so they shouldn't have a problem moving it anyway if we were to redevelop?
Correct.
It's not a transmission line, it's just basically to serve our property?
Right.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from folks? Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
No.
All right, do we have a motion? Anyone at council like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I moved it up to TO 20-22.
All right, do we have a second? Do we have a second or a third?
Snyder's second.
All right, Snyder's on the second. All right, Madam Clerk, let's go.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there any objection to any of the appointments, or anyone want to take any of these off the consent agenda? All right, do we have a motion then regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the consent items and thank all the appointees.
All right, we've got a motion and a second from Mr. Littenhouse. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
All right, and thank you to all our great boards and commission members. Let's move on now to business not on the agenda. Is there any business not on the agenda, any standing regional committee or council liaison reports?
Now the opportunity for me to ask about the EDC.
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you. So we all know how hard staff's been working for the last two-plus months on pandemic response relief and reopening. Staff's also been working on other economic matters, what we refer to as the pipeline of other proposals. And the EDC, which consists, you'll recall, of Ms. Hardy, Ms. Littenhouse, and me, last met in late February, which seems like another lifetime ago, to hear a proposal from Mill Creek, tentative proposal, for the intersection at Southwest and West Broad, where the carpet store and the defunct ride aid are. Since then, we have not met for the last two months. Our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, and what I'm coming to you all to sound out, because you're in a public meeting, we can do some sounding out, is what we should spend our time on Thursday, that would be of best service to the full council. The, and Mr. Shields should chime in here when I shut up. The Westfall Search Gateway partnership is, I believe, on the brink of bringing something to the full council. The Insight Group has been in at least a couple, if not more, meetings with staff about the Broad and Washington project, and I mentioned the Mill Creek 2 proposal, which is, as I understand it, being worked further from what we saw at our meeting in February. So what I would like to know is what would be of most use to the council for the EDC to discuss? The tentative agenda has a staff report on the Insight Project and some sort of update either from staff and the developer, or just from the developer, on the Westfall Search Gateway. Mr. Shields, which of those three things do you think we should be spending our time on, on Thursday, when we're scheduled to meet virtually from 12 to 1:30?
Mr. Duncan, in our conversation, I expressed a bit of maybe an anxiety that I have, that because of our, you know, the way that we're having to do business now, that we need to get information out to the council on discussions that developers are having in the city. So the 10 acres, sort of the big three issues that are under discussion is their site plan, which will be delivered to the city, we believe, on June 1st. We're scheduling that to come to the council for a presentation on June 22nd. But some of the issues we've been working are the intersection of the Commons and Route 7, the Phase 2 office building, which has moved further west than it was when the council last looked at it, you know, a year ago. And the third issue that we're working on behind the scenes is trying to get ourselves ready to have a discussion about a community development authority. Those are kind of the big three that are happening on the 10 acres, a whole lot of other smaller issues. On the Insight Project, we're still trying to get clarity on the parking program as it affects the public parking that the city land is currently used for, along with a whole host of other staff comments in their initial review of the project. So if we had just those two items on the agenda for Thursday, we could bring the EDC up to speed on those discussions and start scheduling when those would come to the full council for a fuller briefing.
Okay, let me just ask one question and then hear from others. What about the Mill Creek 2 proposal? Were they reworking that in response to what they heard at our February EDC meeting and from the neighbors? What's, do we have any further, you know, information on the fiscal impact numbers there or anything? What's the status of that?
So Mill Creek has an option for the ride aid property and the cabinet store on the corner. Their conceptual proposal is a project that has apartments and some amount of ground floor retail, a smaller amount of ground floor retail than we're typically seeing in SE applications, to the extent that it doesn't really fit within the four corners of the SE ordinance. So we don't have a whole lot to share on this project. We'd be happy to share what we know, but I don't think there's a whole lot to react to at this point, at least from, I think, from a staff perspective. We are trying to think through what are some ways that a project like this might be able to bring benefits to the city, but we haven't really come through with, you know, with recommendations on how something like this might best proceed as a technical matter, as well as on a policy matter.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. So of the other two, if we put the Gateway Project on the agenda, but we expect to hear from the development team as soon as June 1st, what would the EDC be doing except, you know, sort of reacting to what we're waiting for, rather than what we have?
So in the, in the comprehensive agreement, the developer does provide a copy of the site plan 10 days before they formally submit it, so that staff can review it to make sure that there's no big things that are like, whoa, what was this? This is not in the plan. And the purpose of that provision in the comprehensive agreement was to prevent the council having to wrestle with a public, you know, with a site plan that didn't meet what the obligations were and have to do that in public. So that initial review is just to make sure everything was essentially aligned with what the expectations are. So we do have a, you know, an early draft that we could discuss with the EDC.
Okay, well, I think then in closing for my part, I would suggest that we keep that as one of our agenda items, and as far as Insight goes, I mean, at some point, we need, in my opinion personally, to fish or cut bait on that, and I don't want to preempt, you know, what the council, the full council wants to do on that project. But at the same time, I don't want the EDC to, you know, just continue to talk about something that somebody needs to bring resolution to, and so I'm looking for the best way to bring resolution to that particular proposal. But at any rate, I suppose we could keep that on the agenda and be guided by what the staff comments are. If we could have those, you know, at the meeting on Thursday, that would be helpful, even if it's not totally complete, it would be, again, new information. Okay, well, that's my proposal then, that we, in our 90 minutes, spend roughly half and half on those two projects, but I'd be glad to hear and curious to hear what anybody else might think.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duncan.
I've got a, I've got a comment, a question, maybe a follow-up. On the Mill Creek Phase 2 project, we'd sent them back with some fairly prescriptive requests and comments. Why are you guys saying that what they've come back with is still creating some consternation for staff? Is that, is that the story? We're not ready to discuss that?
The, what's come back, I think, is something that's very driven by sort of the realities of today's market. And so I think the staff concern is that it, you know, the primary criterion for an SE is a significant increase in commercial square footage, as well as a significant positive net fiscal impact for commercial and residential uses. That first bullet point, it's not a significant increase in commercial square footage, and so that's a, that's a technical issue about this proposal. And in the past, when we received proposals like this, we basically usually just said, you know, doesn't, doesn't fit, we don't have a zoning tool to consider your proposal. Because they have been to the EDC, I think, you know, that, I think it might be worthwhile just to give the EDC an update as to where that, where it is
Yeah.
right now.
Yeah, I would just, I would ask that we get some type of brief either from them or from you all about that, if, for nothing more, for educational purposes, we're in very uncertain times.
That's right.
You know, that, that kind of hard and fast rule, I understand why we have it and understand the genesis of that, but I think it's very important for us as an EDC, as a council, to hear out and get any feedback that we can, whether we agree with it or not. So I would ask if we could carve out, even if it's just 10 minutes, to get a brief from them on what it is that they're saying, I think that that'll help inform some of our decisions and some of our thinking. So I'd ask if there is some movement, some feedback, even if it runs contrary to what staff has typically interpreted, that we put that on the agenda just to hear that. I personally need it just for, again, from, for edification purposes.
Okay.
Okay, it'll be fine with me. We could do 40-40-10 then. The neighborhood meeting, was that a recorded event? I mean, do we have paper or notes, or, I think we have notes at least. Becky did some notes, I think. We at least have those at the meeting too, because I didn't get to participate, now we were having a council meeting when it was held.
I have not seen any notes.
All right, anything else on? Anything else on this matter or other matters?
Mr. Mayor, I have one other matter, just a quick follow-up.
Of course.
If you remember several months ago, we had seventh grade students from Mary Ellen Henderson on the If I Were a Mayor contest, and they gave you a run for your money on being mayor, but I just want to let everyone know that two of them have won awards. Samantha Grooms won the regional award, and Preston Liu won the statewide award, and in this month's issue of the Virginia Municipal League's City and Towns, there's articles about both of them, along with some reflections by their teachers, who are both at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, seventh grade teachers, on teaching during a pandemic and working with students. So get your copy of VML Town and City Magazine, and you will see our city represented very well.
Fantastic. That's awesome. Congratulations. Anything else, folks?
I did have a scheduling question.
Okay.
There are no items on the work session agenda for Monday evening, and tomorrow at noon is the closing time for submitting reports, so I didn't know if you had any guidance on that.
You weren't suggesting we cancel the meeting, were you?
I thought maybe you'd like to take a break, but I don't know.
All right. Why don't we, why don't we talk offline, maybe a little bit, to the city manager and get the lay of the land on that? Does anyone have anything pressing they do want to talk about? Why don't we do this? Why don't if you, why don't we just send any comments you might have to maybe the city manager, myself, and the vice mayor, if there's anything either pro and con you want to talk about, we'll try to sort it out over the next 24 hours or so. Does that work?
12 hours.
12 hours?
I'll tell you.
I don't stay up all night.
You have 11 hours.
All right. 11 hours. 11 hours it is. Okay. Your point is taken, Madam Clerk. Any other thoughts, comments, requests before we adjourn? All right. Let's do it. Why don't we adjourn? Thank you all.
Thank you, council.
And everyone, stay safe.